We'll open the, yes, we'll open the meeting at six o'clock for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 Deerfield Elementary School budget. So I will, at this point in time, turn the proceedings over to Mr. Modesto and his friend.
And if I could real quick, if I could just convene our select board real fast, because we're getting a meeting as well, so I call meeting to order of our Deerfield Select Board, Board of Health meeting for six o'clock, and then we'll reconvene at town hall at seven thirty. If anyone wants to join us there tonight, it should be fun as well. Thank you all.
Everybody's looking for more exposure.
Yeah, exactly. We're waiting for the town hall.
All right, so for the public hearing, I'm going to hand over to Shelley. She knows the numbers? Go ahead.
So we have a budget increase of 2.9% that we are proposing and discussing tonight, looking for approval on for the Deerfield Elementary School for FY21. That dollar amount is $140,211 for a total general fund town appropriation of $4,974,133. So this includes adjustments for expenditures based on actuals from the prior three fiscal years, as well as input from the principal and administrators in regards to operational and programmatic needs and wants throughout the building. Funds have been included for wage increases for IAs based on the existing contract, teachers based on a possible settlement of their contract, and wage increases for any non-union personnel, which includes custodians, central office staff, principals, secretaries, anyone who is not in a union agreement. The budget also includes the addition of two new positions, which total one FTE, they are both part-time. That is an addition of roughly $48,000 to the budget. It's not all hitting the general fund, however, we are going to fund those positions from other funding sources as well as the general fund. The .4 psychologist position, new hire, would be funded partially from general fund and partially from school choice, and the .6 certified occupational therapist assistant would be funded primarily from school choice, not hitting the general fund at all. If you have the detailed budget and look line by line, there are some expenses that have increases to them, however, we did make reductions to offset that, and the majority of the 2.9% increase is strictly related to salaries and wage increases across the board for all staff. I'm going to go through and highlight a few of the major increases to the general fund. So we added in $7,000 for teacher mentor stipends to be paid from general fund. These were previously paid from a grant. That funding is not guaranteed every year, but this is a recurring expense for us, so we added that in. $2,000 was added to the professional development line for teachers and IAs. We increased summer salaries based on actuals from the prior three years by $6,000. There's a minor increase to textbooks of $1,700, and also an increase of almost $3,000 for nature's classroom to provide support and financial assistance for our families and our students so that more can attend that event. Special ed department also has some increases, so we are looking at addition of $7,000 to the general fund to cover consultation services that may be needed, and sped transportation for Deerfield Elementary is increasing by $16,800. As I mentioned, we did have some offsets to the budget, even though those are going up. We were able to bring our utilities down by $18,000 based on actuals from the prior three years. We were able to decrease employee separation costs and benefits by $8,000, and we changed our custodial contract services. We dropped that line item, and it's a line item that hadn't been used in several years, so that was a decrease of $5,000. Salaries and wages for teachers are increasing approximately $110,000 or 3.9% based on a potential contract settlement, including column and step changes. Now, that doesn't all hit the general fund, because some of our teachers are paid from other funding sources, so it's not a direct hit to the general fund, but I did want you to be aware of that number. Our IA salary, same concept, some are paid from other funding sources, however, the increase for our IAs is $26,000 or 3.6% based on their contract. And there is wage increase or adjustments of $34,800 for anyone else that is paid salaries through Deerfield Elementary, non-union personnel administration, central office staff, et cetera. The Deerfield Elementary cost share is increasing for central office staff based on enrollment, so that adds an increase there. We also moved a position that was previously paid for a part-time secretary or position that was paid from school choice. We moved that onto the general fund. And then those two new hires that I referenced are also here on the bottom. So with our all funding sources, revolving funds, and other grant monies that we know that we're going to be able to rely on, the school's total operating budget will total $5,691,066 for FY21. I know that we had need to talk assessment, and probably there's some school choice questions as well, but I'm happy to take questions on this summary before we move on.
Is there an updated one of this?
Yes, there is. That's an extra copy. We did email it around, but I'm happy to send it again if you don't have it.
That'd be great. Thank you. Well, I thought I would at least start off by complimenting you on what's, I know you don't have all the pieces back there, or out there, but Shelley has put together a very comprehensive budget package that is one of the clearest I've had presented in my many years on the committee, and so I wanted to commend you for that, and also for going back and taking three years of history to really come up and fine tune each individual lineup a little more clearly compared to the prior year. So I think it's, this is a very good budget that really identifies the priorities for the school. You worked hard with Tina and Darius and other members of this, you know, the school community and professional staff to come up with a budget that I think really reflects the needs of the school for next year, and at the same time is conservative in that it really doesn't add anything that we don't already do, except for very essential services with two part-time hires to meet special education needs more than anything. So I did want to compliment you both, all three of you on a good job putting together this budget, so. I know that you've got limited things to work with back there.
I can share those if anyone wants to see.
One more.
Couple of quick questions.
Sure, Jeff.
As our, as school choice, how many students we have coming in for school choice? Do we know?
Yes.
We can say what current enrollment is, and I think we have.
Thanks.
They usually have to wait until April when we have a general idea of what the kindergarten enrollment outlook is, and then we also get a clearer view, although we usually don't have a lot of change in the other grades, we get a clearer view of what the other grades might have for open slots or potential, so what we can tell you is current enrollment, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm just curious, a couple of numbers, that's all.
Right.
If you have those.
Which, which numbers?
How many school choice do you have?
Right, for this, for this current year.
Sixty-eight, or thirty-five and thirty-two? Yeah, sixty-eight.
Right.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
That includes pre-K though. Yep, pre-K is six.
There are four pre-K students, so there's sixty-four between the other seven grades.
Okay. Does that include or not include the nonprofit students that we receive?
The nonprofit students we receive?
Right, yeah. Like from the A and so on.
What does that statement mean? That does not include, they're not school choice, they're town residents, so they're, they're part of our.
Do we have a number of those, on those?
No, I do not have that. I would not have that, no.
I just, just curious, from down the road.
Couldn't begin to tell you that number. If that's something that you think you might need, I think I could ask someone to put a number like that together for us if you want it.
And one more question with the, the summer program, is that fee-based as far as parents contributing to that?
Tina, I don't know if you could speak that more directly, but it is some, both. Sorry, I was writing, can you repeat it?
He was asking whether the summer program was like fee-based, parents pay for that. It is a mixture. There's some, some fee, and then there's some grant money we get, you know, federal grant money, I think, and state grant money to do some.
And some of the sped services.
Sped services, that kind of thing, to keep kids learning throughout the, throughout the summer months.
Right. Well, I just, you know, I happen to notice with the, with the, and obviously it makes sense, you're going to have increases in salaries, but I was just wondering if there is some way, shape, or form with that, with the summer program, if there's additional monies available, whether it be grant money or whatever, to help support those increases.
Increase the salaries, is it, with summer, because we, we pay through stipends, so it's reflected in the stipend line, I know, it's not in the salary line, I know.
Thank you.
So, could I? I was just going to, I was going to circle back to kind of the reason where at 2.9 based on, you know, versus another number, as we discussed last meeting, when you, you know, I know Ken wasn't here, but just to rehash that, we were talking about help with part-time psychologists and, and also the other position.
Occupational therapists.
Occupational therapists, because I think the needs that, you know, since I've been on this board, which is not a super long time, but just ever since I've been here, the needs of those, of that group of kids in the school has just grown, like every year, it's more and more and more needs for social-emotional learning, and, you know, all the professional development we're gearing towards that, and, you know, there shows some increase in professional development here for the IAs and all, which is kind of, I know that you've been using that a lot for that, and it really does, I know it increased costs, but in the long run, if we can keep those students in our district and not pay in our district and transportation, it makes, it makes a big difference on the bottom line in the long run, and, you know, and meanwhile, we build an amazing program that's renowned and may attract a student that would be paying a tuition to come from another district, so in the long run, it may help, but, but even still, it gives us the tools to deal with the, the issues that we're having, and doing a better job of educating the kids where they are.
Definitely, we're building a program with the same resources that we had, and the team has done an excellent job of pooling those resources and meeting the needs of the students, but these students require intensive services, and with the addition of the school psychologists, we'll be able to lift them positively, even fade that.
And I guess, in some manner of answering your earlier question, and, you know, you homed in on, on school choice, you don't have the total numbers in front of you, but Shelley's outlined a total budget of $5,691,000.
Last page of your green sheets.
Yeah.
I did, I gave a copy, yeah.
Four hundred and forty-seven thousand of that is covered by school choice funds.
Right.
And then the balance, you can see the other breakdowns across, across the board. You know, school choice is, didn't start off being something that was going to fund large portions of the operating budget, but as you know, over the years, we've, we've evolved to where we have become reliant on it, and we've made, we've been making a concerted effort to ramp back our school choice enrollments, and begin to absorb that money that's, you know, being paid by school choice funds right now, back into the operating budget as judiciously as we can.
Right, yeah.
So that we can reduce reliance on that in case that program ever happens to be altered dramatically.
Obviously, I think we all understand that school choice is kind of like a double-edged sword.
It is.
And it's, it's a fine line, it's a balancing act with the school choice money, and especially how it's applied, so as you were saying, you don't want to become reliant on it.
Right.
So I, I understand where you're coming from with that, especially when you look at it, that what it costs us to educate each student and what we're going to reimburse for school choice, other than special means.
Right, but.
Is a losing proposition, so to say it's coming from funds, from school choice is kind of misleading.
Can I answer? You can answer if you want.
So it, I'll respond, sorry. It does, yes, that's something we're looking at really closely. I think when I, you know, when I was on like the first year or so, you know, we had made the decision, we saw that it was out of balance, and we were funding another whole classroom where we didn't, you know, we were funding a classroom and an IA or two, and all the apparatus that go with the classroom, and the money wasn't there, you, like you were losing money at that point, and we had, and, and so we did take that step, which has been felt as a ripple throughout, throughout the school for many years now. As we dropped one class, then it just, that followed all the way through, so you had a lot of staff changes all the way up through, but we did it because we thought we were looking at the trends and, you know, working with the collaborative and all, that we were seeing, everybody was talking about declining enrollment, declining enrollment, like we were going to have less kids, and that hasn't borne out. I mean, we aren't taking very good care to make sure that we aren't doing another whole classroom, but we are taking advantage of the extra $5,000 you get for the child if you're already going to have a teacher in there, and you have that room, then it makes sense to pull that money in, but definitely, we take your point of, it makes no sense to, you know, just blindly take kids in because, you know, you want to build up this thing, but you realize you're shooting yourself in the foot, because you're just going to cost you more in the long run.
And I understand, schools like quickly, they need school choice, just keep doors open.
That, that's, it can be tough, yeah, that's.
But the problem I also have is that it causes such a ripple effect. Right now, if I'm correct, there is, we have 172 school choice people at frontier.
It gets compounded up there, no doubt, because you're pulling from all.
And so there's a ripple effect, and when there's 600 students at frontier total, you're looking at a little over 30% is school choice.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, you know, it's.
It does, in the long run, it does.
And right now, frontier's looking at an increase of somewhere between 5% and 8% on your budget, so, you know, it's.
Yeah.
No, no.
The initial number you gave us was a little over 5%.
No, 2.2.84% is the increase of frontier. Your assessment?
Your assessment is.
That's the budget increase. You can't, your assessment is based on the wealth of your town, so, and the number of students you're sending us, so we don't do that formula. We look at it, obviously.
Right, right.
We're, we're talking about budget growth.
Yeah.
You gotta be, you know, we're not sending out budget growths of 8%, 5%, that kind of stuff, we're keeping it below 3% this year, we're fortunate to be able to get a little bit. So, I just want to make sure.
But we'll definitely keep a look at that, and then make sure that.
You know, that affects other essential services within the town of Deerfield.
Sure, no doubt.
That we have to worry about.
Education has, will, this year, 21, will, will eat any new growth we've had in the town, so anything that we want to do in the town of Deerfield, you have no money, because just the growth of education costs, and a lot of it's just salary, because we don't do a lot of new programs here, it's just salary and benefits and all, just swallows up, you know, 300 and something thousand dollars a year, so, and, you know, you can only raise your taxes 2.5%, so you wind up with not a lot of money at the end of the year, but.
Here again, I don't want to be taken that, you know, the way I look at it, and my understanding, and the way I look at what you should provide for education for our citizens is probably some of the best you can get in the state. And frontier is an excellent institute as well, but, you know, unfortunately, in the position I'm in now as a selectman, I have to look at what effect it's having on the town in trying to balance that out, as you relate to it carefully. The sad part about it is with all towns, you only, you have a pool of money, and everybody's trying to do the best they can from that same pool of money.
Yep.
And unfortunately, that pool of money is getting smaller and smaller, as we say, not, you get some, you have some revenue growth, but it's not enough to keep up with the growth that the towns and the schools actually want or need.
Correct, yep.
And so it makes it very difficult, you, you get into a balancing act once again to try to keep everybody happy, and obviously with Deerfield here, again this year, we're in a world of hurt. Pressed again, as far as what we can do, not only for schools, but for the, for the town, all the town departments too.
And this budget is an excellent budget, I mean, a 2.9 is, is really good, I mean, it's not, we're not looking at 5% increase or 6% increase or something, and even with a good year and a good budget like this, we're going to be devastated in town, we just, it's, we're looking for a couple hundred thousand dollars, and I don't know where to find that. I mean, with any of the projects, that's not including like any money we have set aside in capital reserve that we've been trying to do things, just, just the operating budget to make sure we have police and, you know, and all the other things that run a town, we're, you know, we'll have to make some cuts, because we just don't have enough money, because it all, it all, it goes to education, which is, you know, it's important, it's a driver of why people buy a house here and move here and live here and.
Well, one thing I would like to say is that with the school system here, especially the elementary school, and I believe it applies to frontier a little bit, but you go throughout the state, and I don't think you'll find especially another elementary school as well-staffed as what Deerfield has, and they're very well-staffed compared to most towns. And I just say teachers, but the IAs and that, and I'm not saying they're not important, because they are, obviously, but when you look around and you go to other school systems, I don't think you're going to find one that is as well-staffed as this, but that's why Deerfield is desirable.
You do get what you pay for, and, and we have wonderful teachers, no doubt about that.
Yes. But how many children do we have on the charter schools right now?
I have that right off the top of my back. It's the sore subject.
That's a deep mine, if somebody wants to go back, it's heavily shapable.
Yep, it's very difficult.
We have paid, you live in Deerfield, you know, getting paid, but here's a cavity for men, you can listen.
Yep. It is, it's tough, especially when you have a wonderful education system already, it is hard to see kids, you know, leave our system, for whatever reason, it's a parent's choice, and it is what it is, but, and I went to a education meeting at JFK in Florence on Monday night, Tuesday night, something like that, it was 70 minutes on Chapter 70 Funding, held by Tracy Novak and Massachusetts Association of School Committees, really great education on, like, when education started in 1623, right up to today, what laws we have, and who pays for what, and it's, it's very tough, and charter schools, you know, the state has pitted charter schools and districts against each other, and it shouldn't be that way, and they recognize that. Joe Comifer recognizes that that's, you know, that's their making, it's not anyone's fault, it's not a parent's fault for making decisions, or anybody else's fault, it's just the way they set up the funding schedule, and we only get money back, we lose a lot of money every year to that, and we only get money back on the increase, so, you know, you, so if you, if you've only got $5,000, you could spend $50,000, but if you spent $50,500 next year, you only get 500 bucks back. So it's, it's tough, we lose a lot of money to that.
Well, once again, as we talked before, though, the, the state is going to have to look at the aid that they provide, because for the rural schools, it's just not happening.
True.
And if that doesn't increase, obviously, down the road here, we're going to be, we're going to have a very tough time to sustain the school model the way it is.
Yep.
We may have to be forced into a situation at some point in time here, where if they don't increase that aid, we're going to have to start thinking outside the box, and that's, that's going to be tough, a lot of people are going to wipe out.
The Student Opportunity Act went a long ways for the state, did not help rural schools and us out here at all, I mean, very little, some transportation, a little bit more reimbursement for charter school increase, but just really didn't make any amount of money. And then you have to write a bunch of plans on how you're going to spend this windfall of money, so people have to spend forever writing a plan on how you're going to spend another $50,000 when, so it just really is, is not working.
Right, $50,000, it just simply doesn't go very far.
And Joe Comifer, Joe Comifer got in a lot, got in these studies, so they are important to look at and keep on top of, of addressing these needs in the rural school needs and declining enrollment schools, that kind of thing, so there's, there's hope that that will, will take shape, but they, it's a large increase in spending, but it's, there's no money, so it's just shifting money around and how much different towns are going to pay and that, so there's no magical amount of money that's getting added to education yet.
So charter student going out, we have five students for the price of $92,000 in change.
Yep.
That's obviously not in that budget, executive committee of town, you guys know that.
Thank you.
So, any questions from the assembled multitudes as well? Any thoughts, or? Anything else back there?
Here again, I'd just like to compliment the school systems that we have here. I'm very proud to tell people I'm in Deerfield and what we are, you know, we have excellent staff in place, the unfortunate part is just the money, and, you know, it's, it's hard, and because, you know, we have a lot of residuals on the side that we've got to think about.
We need to flush our toilets.
Yeah.
It's a big ticket, everybody. Thank you so much.
We have to look at our budget in total, we're going to have to make some cuts, so I'd just like to say, I'm really appreciative of the budget you put forward, I think it's very, I mean, people obviously worked on it, contain costs, so, but we have a few more weeks to work on ours and try to balance, so we may be back for other considerations.
Could you, could you shed a little light as to where it stands currently?
Well, we're about, I, I would say, I mean, this is just me, but we're, we're probably $150,000 short of my comfort level, of where we should be. We're, we're, we're moving money around, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to do stuff, but.
$150,000.
Yeah, total, total for everybody and everything, so, at least that's my opinion.
Just very quickly, I, and I hope I'm not speaking out of term, but we had a finance committee last week, and with what was budgeted at this point, we had, if we funded, actually, you can't even fund everything that we had, but with cutting a few budgets to bring it in line, somewhat in line, it would leave us with $16,000 in free cash, and we have never done that. We've always been around the $250,000 to $300,000 minimum of free cash to carry over, so that's why we're saying, you know, the money comes from the same pool, and it kind of puts everybody in a, in a difficult situation, and I hope I'm not speaking out of term, but.
No, we're still, we're still.
We're still working on the budget.
And just for the general audience, free cash is not something that we can find anywhere on the streets ourselves. That's a, that's a term within the town's, or the state's budgeting process. It's a terrible term, but once a town completes its fiscal year, it's left with what they spent, what was budgeted, and the difference, if it's a surplus, or if it's, you know, what was budgeted is higher than what was actually spent, you end up with a, a surplus, that's called free cash, and that gets certified by the state, and that's a number that's very, very important for the select board and finance committee as they go through budgets in the spring, to help them balance out actual revenues that will be coming in with money that's been there before, and put it all together to come up with the final plan.
And that free cash of about 200 or 300,000 is, you know, to take into account anything that happens between town meeting and the end of the year in June, and, you know, we have COVID-19 right now, which is wreaking havoc on the economy, so not as many cars purchased, you know, the, the revenues that you expect to get in excise tax and things like that, that you kind of conservatively budget, those fall off the map, when no one's buying and no one's shopping, you get, you get no excise tax coming into the town, and now all of a sudden, you expected to have a little bit of, you know, room there, you don't have any room left, and, and it's tough, you can't, you've got to budget. We only have, we've set aside $100,000 as a town for a reserve fund, you know, for a rainy day, like what happens if something bad happens? like, what happens if something bad happens? And that can get eaten up really fast. You know, even just a boiler breaks or the dishwasher breaks here, or something like that. There's, there's all those things that we, you know, have a little bit of money set aside in the year, but not much. It's pretty tight. So, makes us nervous.
And just to make sure everybody understands, any money that is not used by the town gets carried over, but that's usually applied to the next year's budget to reduce the next year's budget.
Right.
So, it's not like it's just building and, yeah, all sorts of free money around.
Yeah. We need to start the next year.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts from the assembled multitudes? Hearing none. We will close the hearing at 6:32 PM. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your input. We'll look forward to the coming weeks, and hopefully, we don't see you again.
This one is still going to go on.
Day by day. Yep. We're looking at that day by day.
Is that a question or statement?
No.
So, basically...
You were already formulating a game plan.
We have a game plan. Carol and I have met several times to talk about our game plan, if we haven't mapped out. Currently, it's going to be part of my report later on, but you're asking, since people are here and may want to leave, with your permission, I'll go that route.
Yep.
Basically, we've increased, obviously, we're increasing awareness. You know, I've had several letters out to families and staff. We're increasing the hygiene of the building with more wipe downs and more thorough wipe downs of areas. We're increasing the hand washing of students and faculty during the day, because it's a similar transmitter, and when they leave the building as well, to go back out to the populace, and when they come in the building, to join the rather, our internal community. And as I explained, you know, I met with the Deerfield staff yesterday just to talk about this. You know, when we look at schools, schools are the hub point for the community. For, you know, obviously, we send from all the different houses around town. They meet through the day, and they go home, unlike any other kind of workplace outside of UMass.
Yeah.
But, so, but the idea is that, you know, within that, if we have to close the building, it'll be based on an assessment of a, either an outbreak in the community that's tied to the building, or a concern that we need to slow down the passage of COVID-19. So, and that's really the main kind of, with this particular virus, it's not really affecting children, but the children are carriers of it. So, and since they're getting it, but they're not being positive.
One of the reasons I'm asking is, one of the things I'm proposing to the board tonight is that the county here can declare a state emergency.
We already did.
Well, you did. I missed the meeting last night at work. It's just so we can have funding to have a talk. So, I saw that Brenda set up the fund.
Yes.
We did it last night.
But that's something the school can piggyback on.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We, we need to clarify frontier, but absolutely, any cost, the reasonable reasons to do that is number one, also to convey that it is a serious situation, but that all expenses can be, start being categorized and hopefully be reimbursed at some point. So, Brenda has set up, our accountant has set up an account. So, any expenses related here in the elementary school to sanitation and cleaning and extra staffing and extra expense, all can come and should go to Brenda for, to go into that account. So, we have an account, accounting, and hopefully reimbursement at the end of this event. But it's going to be a long-term event. Darius has been absolutely fabulous with communication and meeting. We've had several meetings, as you said, and we, we have policies that are evolving during the day, and decisions are changing during the day. So, I mean, we're trying to be on top of this and make as most informed decisions as possible for the safety of everybody.
I have to apologize for not being informed. We, we upgraded our email system, and I've stopped getting emails. I don't take a hint well.
Initially, they did send all the course funds that I sent to families to the course as well, just so that you're, you're aware of what we're doing in the school, because the communities are tied that way.
My wife works in the guidance office, so she keeps me informed. But sometimes I have selective hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. So, we'll move into the regular meeting portion of our agenda. And first item would be the minutes of February 5, 2020, which I will table until our next meeting, when we've had a chance to complete drafting. We didn't get a final draft ready for this, this particular meeting. Financial statement and warrants, we always see the memo from Shelley indicating that our budget still remains on track with the original budget numbers that were put out at the beginning of the year. We have nine warrants totaling $92,048.36 that we're looking at this evening in signing. And are there any other comments on the financial statements and warrants?
We'll ask you all the questions.
Capital thing a little bit is just, you know, I want to say the bathroom looks great. The public bathrooms in this hall have been redone during break. I think, wouldn't break, they look really good. New stalls and everything, right? That's been great. So, we'll keep moving around on that as we can. But I, I know that dishwasher's been an issue, like, keeps breaking down. And I was going to talk to Bill about that, see what he thought, how long. I had talked to the staff, and they, you know, it's constantly breaking. So, it's one of those things we should keep an eye out for this year, but we don't have it on a capital. We have it four years out to look at a major, kind of go through that kitchen and do the larger appliances and ovens and things like that. But that, I don't think it's going to make four years, because I think it, I don't know, you guys may know more than me, but it has been...
I only knew it had to be repaired. I didn't know that the repair was not going to hold for four years.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, I'll get more information.
Yeah, just wondering about that, like, how long?
So, is it a continued repair problem? I don't, I wasn't told that part. I was only told that there was, there was an issue.
Okay. That'd be great to find out. I just wondered if it...
I don't know if it's ever been replaced, so I can't remember if it's been...
It's got a few years on it if it hasn't been replaced. Right.
The important thing, though, is it's on the capital plan.
For, for...
So...
Yep. That's good. Okay.
Public comment. Any public comment this evening? I thought I saw a hand going, but it's just adjusting the glasses on top of the head.
It's like an auction.
Okay. Unfinished business. Further discussion on the proposed FY21 budget. Does the committee have any thoughts, or anything else that they wanted to see addressed, or, I know you had a good discussion last meeting, so...
We did. I think settled on where we're at right now. And again, we don't have, hope we don't have to come back. But, I mean, I would make a motion to approve this if we wanted to vote it at this, at this time. I don't know if there's any other discussion to have on it right now or not. So, you would, you're making a, a motion to approve the proposed FY21 budget in the amount of, I don't have it in front of me, but $5,600?
No, we're just going to approve the general fund.
No, thank you. Sorry.
Here, I got it. If it doesn't die, I had it.
What is it? Yep. I'll make the motion to approve the FY21 budget at $4,974,133.
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed instance will have Carrie's unanimously for nothing. And we will have that sent off to the Board of Select, and it's the final number here, here debates right now. Thank you again for coming.
We'll just need some more, and then hopefully, we might be back. Because I feel like this is, you know, we did a good job on the budget.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I specifically turned off blocking. Guess it didn't work. All right. Back to the agenda. Discussion and vote on the following policies. I'll just read the JBB, Educational Equity, JB, which is Equal Educational Opportunities, which was changed by the MASCE, JFABD, Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services, JFABE, which is Educational Opportunities for Military Children, and JFABF, which is Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. All of these are policies that are put in, are being put in place or revised under guidance from the DESE and from Mass Association of School Committees. And they were presented last month.
Well, I just had a question on, like, I guess IHA, the vote to remove the Basic Instructional Program. I was wondering how that, where that fit into...
Wrong one.
That's, that's later. Okay, thank you. I was wondering if that was, or where they're back. I didn't notice that in the others. Okay, those are all new. Perfect. All right. I'm good.
So, but, yeah, so, and I said it at the last meeting, because it does. So, you have two sets of policies in front of you. One, you did a reading through last meeting.
Yep.
Very, they're very straightforward about rights, you know, meaning the rights of all students. And even, but just by reading the names of these, are subgroups of populations that need to have some extra policies to support them, to make sure that their living situations, such as being homeless, being in the military, being in a foster care system, making sure that they are, that we're taking care of them, and that because of their living situation is not being moved around the country. And all three of those scenarios, we're not, not working with them or working against them. So, listen, can't find the word. So, those are straightforward. There's another set of policies that we're doing the first reading of, which we'll get to next.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yep.
So, on the policies from last month that are voting up tonight, there's two copies of each. Is the old one first and then the new one? It's not totally obvious. The ones with the handwriting on them are new?
Those are new.
They felt newer?
Yes. Versus that, that first packet was the...
Like, old first and new?
Yes.
Yes. And you can tell, the best way to figure it out, I don't know how yours was, like I said, printed off, but you can go to, like, the, you look at the end, and you look at the revised date. This is something from long ago, many, many years ago, and you know that's the other policy. Some of them have, mine are all marked up by, like, Don Mark came up with. Mine look different than yours, so that I, so I, but yeah, it goes, it goes the new one, then the old one. At least that's how mine was printed out.
Almost the opposite.
Oh, yeah. New, yeah.
For example, the, the new ones are going to say source MASCE October 2018, or September 2019.
Okay. So, one has a revised date of 2018, one has a source date of 2019.
Yep.
I would say if you were not to adopt them, you would have to have a policy subcommittee to look and to, to come in compliance with the law, to do what the policy says. So, you're welcome to go to the policy subcommittee.
I just wanted to be clear, I understood which we all need to report.
The old catch 22. Some of us have been through a few policy meetings.
A few.
One person in particular has been through more than anybody.
That's true.
Both here and probably in her...
We're all done, and then, guess what?
They, they do not stop.
Okay.
So, you don't need them each individually voted?
No, I do need them as a full...
I will entertain a motion to approve policies JBB, JB, JFABD, JFABE, and JFABF as written.
So, move?
Second.
Any other questions or thoughts? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved for nothing. Unanimous again. Thank you. So, we move on to new business, and that would be the first reading of various policy changes. And I can turn it over to Darius.
And that goes to your question, Trevor, which, I don't have the answer to your question on that. So, basically, they, the MASCE has gone through these policies and called these to be redundant, unnecessary, due to either their repute elsewhere or found in state law. And so, you know, the Basic Instructional Program, they're saying is a redundant. I was asked by a weighty committee to find out where the redundancy is on that particular one. I'd like to know that, so...
Yeah, that first one just seems like, why would we pull out, you know, I'll just read this. The law further states the American history civics, including the Constitution of the United States, the Declaration of Independence, Bill of Rights, local history, and government will be taught as required subjects in public schools.
My guess is that it's going to come out of, if I was going to go looking for it, I'm going to guess it's going to be under the Mass Common Core. Mass Core requires us to teach those subjects. So, it's going to probably be there, but I will firm up, because you don't want that to disentangle.
No, right.
We're not going to stop. Yeah.
Might be something in Mass General Laws as well.
Yeah.
That are cited here.
Correct. So, again, they're voting, they're asking us to remove that from our, you know, they, they help us keep maintaining our policies to keep them up. We're not having, had any policies. And the next one is Student Insurance Program. Again, medical insurance is now for children is a law in Massachusetts, so I can imagine that's where that's coming from. But again, they're saying to renew it, go to remove. The Guidance Program, we're not looking at removing our guidance program, but they're saying that this is coming from, again, I think it's coming from Mass Core, I mean, the General Core curriculum. And then Gifts and Solicitation, that's now, that's a law, I mean, the ethics law about giving gifts to teachers and so on, and other staff members. Principals is not listed here, you're still good.
You can still get apples.
You can still, yes. And in fact, in some of them, they showed a cross-reference on the last one, where the other laws are. The last one, which is, and I'm running off of this policy newsletter that you guys got back in early January, where these are all coming from.
Yes.
Is Public Comment. And this is basically, this policy's been updated to clarify the purpose and guidelines relative to Public Comment at school committee meetings. Revised Language notes that the Public Comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee, but rather an opportunity for individuals to express opinions on issues within the school committee's scope of responsibility. Revised Language emphasizes that all speakers are expected to present their remarks in respectful manner. And the chair of the meeting, after a warning, reserves the right to terminate speech that is not constitution-protected. Refer to the complete policy that follows for full text of the language, Revised Language. This policy also buys us a good idea for school committees. When dealing with constitutional issues, seek advice from District Council.
Yeah, I think this, this is a result of a case, I think.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
And so, just kind of clarifying the language, obviously, somebody probably already has had a war. But within it, if you don't have a color copy, it gets, probably gets very confusing. But, well, I imagine it'll come up a few, but obviously, what's crossed out, what's black is the old policy. This is how we kind of, this is, what's crossed out is what's removed from the old policy, and what's red is what's added to the new policy.
Right.
And so, out of all these, I can give you kind of the update from the other, this is the one they've had the most conversation about. They've asked me, Frontier Committee asked me to, many times, there's only one or two speakers at Public Comment, in, in common, and asked if we could put language in here that will allow the chair to waive the policy at the beginning of, during, at their discretion, so that if you want to have a conversation, it says something in here that you have to write down, who's speaking, so you can keep a chart for the minutes. There's one person... If there's one person speaking, a lot of our committee meetings, it's common dialogue. And this is right, even tonight, technically, you'd have to, you know. Well, the public hearing is different, because it doesn't follow the public, open, public comment section. But if you're just having one or two people speaking, if you know there's a larger crowd, you may have to have to follow more stringent, so that you can get through into your business and so that you can keep, keep things running smoothly. So, they asked me to look in to have a line in there that allows, you know, one public comment on something, you can ask a question and you can.
Have a dialogue a little bit.
Yeah, right, right. And so you can, because they didn't want, the other committees really didn't want to lose that.
The hometown feel.
The hometown feel, exactly. But, sorry, I'll be getting that, that language change for the home head. There you go.
Nice. Very good. Thank you very much.
No votes required under new business, so we're down to reports. Chairperson.
Can report to you that you had a good vacation.
I will report that the weather was good in Florida, that's about all I can report on right now, so. Certainly somewhat distressing to come back and be faced with the public health crisis that's gripping the world and obviously impacting school communities very gravely. Everyone's on edge. We'll figure out a way to make it through, and I'm confident in our administration and that the Board of Selectmen, the state, the nation, the world will come to a resolution that works and makes it as safe as possible for all of us.
True.
That's all we can do at this point in time. Hope that this thing goes away, or there's a treatment that's soon found that helps with it, so. That's my commentary from the chairperson.
Sounds good.
Anything, you went to collaborative?
Uh, no, since last meeting.
Okay, good. And the principals report.
We hear a lot of great things happening with schools, and one of them is our new interim assistant principal, Elaine. Who's out there in the audience, please stand up, give a little tailspin. No, you don't have to. This is what I do to her all the time. So fun, having someone new. She has a wealth of experience with special ed and behavioral programming as an assistant principal, and she's had a really smooth transition into Deerfield, and we're fortunate to have her to the point where sometimes I forget she's new, and I'm like, hey, can you remind me that you don't know who everybody is? So, you know, thank you, and I know that she's introduced herself to you.
And welcome to our community, for sure.
She used to know who everybody was.
Still a lot of faces that are still here.
I know there are. Amazingly enough.
Yeah.
It's been great to have her. Smooth transition in the middle of the year, and we're just really fortunate.
It's great.
Well, I was going to talk about some of the precautions that we've put in place around COVID-19, but I think I leave that to you. Did you say that was in your report? Or you already kind of did it, so.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in short summer, to summarize, there is increased sanitation procedures that are happening and hand washing. So, custodians, a big shout out to the custodians who have really ramped up their sanitization schedules, if you will, and, and teachers for changing their routines and structure in the classroom to allow for some of the hand washing. So, that's a little bit of an update there. And then, our diversity leadership team, which is led by students, our very own Jen Smith, hair toss? No? Okay. And Giselle Richardson, who is our school psychologist, have come up with many different activities for students across the building, and also, you may have gotten some emails about Pink Shirt Day. For those of you that don't know what Pink Shirt Day is, we're celebrating that March 27th, wear anything pink. It's a day that, in Canada in 2007, there were two students that teased another student for wearing pink, and, nope, there were students that teased another student for wearing pink, and two students stood up and handed out pink shirts for everybody to wear on the next day. So, as a show of solidarity, that symbolized how DES stands together as a community for kindness and inclusion. We're asking everybody to wear pink, anything pink, pinkish. And, so, shout out to the diversity leadership team, because they have so many exciting events that happen throughout the year, and we're fortunate to have them too. Facilities update, our cameras have been installed. We have nine new cameras outside and inside, and they should be up and functional by the end of the month. They're up and secretive right now. Only I can view them, and that's telling you where they are. And then, the kindergarten is in a sweet and sticky situation. They're just, they're studying maple sugar and syrup, maple sugaring, and they've tapped some trees outside. I giggle a little bit, because there was an email that went around, and so if anybody's on the email chain of, like, tell the kids not to dip their fingers in it and lick it.
Right.
With the coronavirus going around, so that's a little funny. And then, we were fortunate to have Rockbridge Seniors Center come in as part of our Read Across America Day and share stories with students. Read Across America was another well-intended event for students, so.
Seen a lot of social media on the Read Across America thing that DES is doing, and the kids, parents are posting what the kids are reading, and the different things they're picking out each day, and I'm seeing it on the Deerfield Parents site, Deerfield Now site, and it's really, really inspirational to see, you know, I always remember that too, when Caleb was here, and it's great to see that everybody taking that and expanding their reading, and, yeah.
It's great to get into different classrooms and have our kids read, and the children are really enjoying it.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
MASCE ten report went out, it's already out of date based on how fast things are moving with COVID-19. Basically, last week when I wrote this report, we were kind of pushing out to the schools to get a kind of a, to talk with all students grades four through six, or four through 12, about get a general baseline of knowledge of what the COVID virus was. We used a Brain Pop video that was kind of straightforward, there was also an NPR, what do you call that? It's like a cartoon scatter, I forget what, there's a name for it, but storyboard about talking about what COVID-19 is, and so just that they had a, a general baseline of knowledge there. We kind, we did that within all the schools. This week, we are kind of ramping things up a little bit more, as, you know, as we're getting advice from the Board of Health as well, and from, dealing with the Board of Health, DESI, Governor's Office, and Mass Department of Health. I mean, we're kind, I'm on a different conference call or video or something, or meeting or phone, we're talking to someone every day or multiple times a day. We're now kind of in, starting, well, we started yesterday launching, we started Monday to plan the, how we were going to execute it, but the, and I was talking about this earlier, increasing washing of hands and trying to make it additional practice in the classroom. And the hope is to do it without changing the course of the day, you know, and so each building is, is doing, and each classroom is doing it differently based on, it's not, we're not doing, you know, you know, this bell rings, I'm going to wash the hand, but how do we fit it into the day, logical times, and just kind of increasing that. And the more hands, the more hands we can wash by the end of the day, hopefully we had a cleaner day than we were doing before. And the same with our facilities, we're stepping that up as well. We also have created a, I'm repeating myself, because I was kind of off, I was kind of not organizing my thoughts before. You know, basically, a game plan for if and when we have to make decisions regarding having cases in the community. You know, we have to, each case is different, and I just have to kind of put out there that the school is going to react differently to each kind of case depending on how the community is affected by it, depending on the school community is affected by it, and, and working with the local and state boards of health to, health experts to know how to do that. So, it could be as simple as something as we're doing a day or two to clean a building, because based on that there was a transmission in the building, or not transmission, but a concern that the person was in the building, you know, and left, left some goodies behind, a virus behind that we had to go clean up, or to something longer based on whether or not we have to stop the transmission within the community, which would be the reason why we would cancel school. And I'm trying to make that very clear, because we want this, there's a lot of fear, and there's a lot of information's not flowing very smooth, very smoothly on this. There's, you know, from side that this is some sort of made up scare versus, you know, people kind of burying themselves in shelters. You know, we got both ends of the spectrum there. We're trying to take each step as it comes, make decisions that are based on information that we have. So that's kind of where we're at. But we did kind of, it's kind of like the whole, how do we do a snow day cancellation? Carol and I and others are on this list, and we're going to go right through whoever gets information, confirming information, and then working off that information to make decisions based on what we need to do to protect, not just the school committee, but the greater community. And they really, the fear is the greater community, those with compromised immune systems and, or older, with compromised immune systems and health issues. So, you know, that's what we're trying to make sure that we don't become the hub to spread that, to spread that out. And so whenever we have a concern about that, we're going to address it, and, you know. We don't know how long it's going to last, you know, the hope is it'll come and go, but that's not realistic. It's going, we think it's going to be here for a while, as it kind of works its way through. There's a part of us that wants it here for a while, so that we can treat those patients coming through. But the big concern is the spreading of it and overwhelming our health services. Being Western Mass, even Eastern Mass, same problem, increased population, but there's only so many doctors and so many hospital beds and so many, you know, that you really need to, we need to help stagger it out as it makes its way, I hate to say it, put it this way, it makes its way through the population, because it's going to have to do that in some, at some level. And then hopefully, in medicines and everything, it's stretching out, so it's very, very down talking, but trying to do a positive swing. We talked about it earlier, you know, yesterday, and, you know, we're also, and at the same time, we are looking at, did you send your email out before? Did you send the email out yet?
We got to give more information, which one? The one. The which one?
Friday one regarding teachers looking at.
Yes.
So, this is kind of also half the press, the principals met today. This is a pre-planned day of meeting to look at a lot of, a lot of the different things that we are working on. But one of the things we're doing is on Friday, as part of our early release, is we're going to, it was a, it was a teacher-directed day that we have asked the teachers to look at, what would it look like if we had to send students home for two weeks? What could we do to continue education? Not a continuation of a continued curriculum in the classroom, but, you know, we are, our mission, you know, you're looking at the underlying mission outside of this, you know, state natural disaster kind of thing, is that, you know, continue, kids continue to learn and do things at home that tie into learning and being inquisitive and that kind of stuff. To look at, what could we possibly put together to keep that mission alive, and that kids aren't just dropped at home to go stagnant for two weeks? But, and also to work with me and with parents, this is all kind of being formulated.
Right.
Still being handed off to teachers, that's what I'm saying, they're just, they're still, they're still processing it, but, you know, it can be fun. Yeah, I'm looking at it as, you know, you know, how do we just kind of, you know, keep that engagement going? Because we are, we are above, I didn't say we're above average district, and I think we have above average expectation of our kids and families to continue. You know, I'm not saying like, wrote homework, I'm talking about, you know, reading, you know, you know, if, you know, I think parents, as a parent with kids here, you know, I want to be, I want to be able to say, my teacher said, here, half hour each day, you know, and then, let's do a little bit of this, or, you know, here are some general different ideas, because we have different socioeconomic backgrounds and different, you know, access to computers and that kind of stuff. So, with that in mind, I don't want to just not do nothing, because it's going to be hard to reach everyone. We're going to do our best to reach everyone where they're at and how we can move them forward if, if we have to do it prolonged, absent. Hopefully, this will sit on the shelf.
Right.
You know, but it's a, it's there if we need it.
Well, thanks for all that work. I know it's a lot for everyone.
I've done nothing with COVID the last three days.
I know, I know.
Luckily, the budgets were in good order.
Yeah, exactly.
It's been literally nothing but that.
It has, it has. It's going to continue.
The other things on my list is negotiations. We're continuing after the, after the one-year contract, we're doing what we're calling cable talks right now, just talking about the different scenarios with Shelley, myself, and Greg on the school side, and members of the association on the other side, just talking about different, different, what if this, what does it look like? And we've had one meeting, we have another meeting on the calendar. Nothing is binding on either side of it, it's just to really just kind of get the ideas out there.
Yep.
About what could be possible, and what our limitations are and other things. So, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. The last thing is the Student Opportunity Act. It's the best way to end the meeting, talking about that. And so, the Student Opportunity Act gave us an increase in Chapter 70 money. Deerfield received, where are my glasses? I need my glasses in order to see the number, they're so small. It's $9,480, and they want me to submit a report about how we are going to use that money to increase the meeting the needs of students who are, are struggling. So, within our, you know, within our, in our school, special ed, that kind of thing. And I got to come up with a two-page report, and based on, it's got to be evidence-based, that kind of thing, and I have to have it by April 1.
Off-school barbecue?
Off-school barbecue, exactly.
When I went to the meeting the other night, there was a discussion about that very subject, and we're going to do our part to talk to, you know, our representatives, Joe Commerford, Natalie Blay, that I don't think what you've got from DESI for requirement was really the intention of the legislators when they wrote this, especially, you know, I mean, it's one thing if you're getting another million dollars.
Well, so, so for those who haven't followed, I did send out the, just the big, the highlight, and then the whole thing, if you really wanted to read the whole thing. But, you know, they're really looking at the 35 districts, got over $1.5 million extra money. They want accountability to it.
Yep.
It's a little bit different about how you're rolling out that kind of increase.
Right.
Our increase, you know, basically, when you talk about choice, it's two students of choice give us more money than the state did this year.
Right.
So we start talking about, and in other schools, it's even far less, you know, percentage-wise of the growth of the budget. So, anyway, I have to follow the law.
Yep.
And so, basically, they said I could, you got to love this, I can submit this, it needs to have school committee approval, but I can submit it prior to school committee approval, to make, in order to meet the deadline by April 1. So obviously, they value your input.
Yeah.
I do as well.
We trust you.
So, it's going to be part of the joint meeting, because it's, because we're going to lock, we're not going to do anything different. We're not going down a different path. The majority of our, where we're, you know, doing change in our district is through our professional development. It's going to fall within that model, so we're going to tie that into the joint meeting that we, I don't want to bring, Kim out to multiple meetings and, you know, do it four times, you can hear it together, because we're going to have basically the same plan in each building to address those needs. And it's, it fits in what we're already doing with the asking. It's just annoying that since 1980, they've been, every year, giving us less and less money, and now that they're giving us even less, they want us to be accountable for it. You know what I mean? So, yeah, it's more fun for me to report that than.
Yep. And that'll be mid-April, we'll have a meeting on that, right?
We have the joint meeting on April 11th.
Yeah, okay.
It's coming soon.
Yeah, okay.
What is it?
So it'll be, it'll be after the April.
11th, 4, 7, right in the middle. So, it's April 7th, we have a joint meeting, and then we'll, you'll be doing school calendar, there's that, and you'll be doing. Doing a lot of that, some bits ministry, that's easy to hit you guys all at once with, my teams outside, not outside, additional administrators to talk about.
And hopefully not in the week in COVID.
It, it's already in my mind. It's already in my mind, I don't have the, having a joint meeting like that, there's already talk that other committees are talking about not meeting together. You know, I had a conversation with Amherst, who's talking about that there are larger crowds in this, but should the rise of concern in the community be, we may have to look at how we do business for a meeting or so. And we'll, I'll be in touch via.
Right.
Not in person. I think that was all I had. And then I just had an update of all the different things I'm working on.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Based on your report, I'm assuming we do not need to enter executive session?
Nope, that's going to stay on the agenda through negotiations, in case you ever have any questions after that.
So that brings us down to adjournment, make a motion to adjourn. Trevor has a motion. Two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
At 7:10.